I pledge the allegiance through the flag of the United States of America. And consider it an honor to witness this sentence, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone. Thank you everybody out here on this beautiful evening. One great thing about being here in this area of Mr. Snyder is such a beautiful view here. Pretty day. You've done a good job in our respect, not storming or anything with days yet. Let's, I'd like to start since we are on the road so to speak as we call it rather than being at the board office and we're having our always our LSIC meetings. I'd like to introduce all members of the board that are with us tonight. On the far end is Larry Loperson. Beside him is Fred Curry. He's the vice president of the board. Mr. Midkiff, Jeff Midkiff is our superintendent. I'm Steve Priestley. This is Rowdy Baker. And this is Carol Smith. Also our assistant superintendent Bill Limble is over there. Our executive secretary of the superintendent, that won't look up, but she's there, Susan McCann. She thinks we won't see her, so if I can, if you don't look at her. Mr. Kirk King, our program director, Chris Hyde, he's back there in the back with the distinguished look about him. I think very nice to see him so far anyway. But for those that don't know, the LSIC local school improvement council, each school is required to have one and Board of Education is required to meet with each one every year. So we travel about rather than going to each school. Oftentimes schools are in close proximity to one another. They will take turns being the host. And so my one here from, let's see, it's 21st, Hammond PKA and Plank County Hospital will be the few that are going to present to us tonight. So we're glad to be here and we welcome that. Good work by Heston St. Let's begin the approval of minutes of September 25th, 2018 regime meeting, please. Mr. Baker?
Sir.
Thank you to Miss Smith, that's Molly Esteban?
Yes.
Okay. Public comments? I don't think we have anybody doing this thing. Okay, just once again, just for informational purposes, anyone may speak to the board by signing in prior to the board meeting. We have a pink sheet, I guess though it stands out. But so should someone come in and want to speak to the board, they may do so. Now, once again, we can't interact with that person, but we can certainly listen to anybody who actually wants to address the board and get into discussion or have conversations with us must contact the superintendent's office about the prior Wednesday so that it can be on our agenda. Our agendas typically go out on Thursday. You know, all agendas have to go out three days before the meeting's law. So if you would have someone or a group or whatever wants to address the board, they may need to contact the superintendent's office, notify them Wednesday or prior week, and then with that person or group it can be on the agenda and we can have a conversation following the presentations or reports of our attendance. But we don't have any of those tonight, but I was like to tell everybody just for informational purposes. But we're going to do our school improvement council presentations first and we're going to have Hammond PKA will be here first, which is Don Davis, who's the principal. Mr. Davis?
All right, thank you. Did you all hand out the... I'll turn your attention to you.
Sir?
I think I'm going to present from over here so I can see the screen.
Make sure you're on the right page.
Yep, make sure I'm on the right page. President Priestley, Mr. Midkiff, school board members, and Mr. Snyder. I want to thank you all for giving Hammond PKA the opportunity to talk about some of the good things going on in our schools and test scores as well. So I brought Mrs. Huffman, our assistant principal Lori Huffman, and Mrs. Dodi Ayse. She's an ELA teacher, language arts teacher in the middle school as well. And they're going to help me present and see. Now, one of the things I'm not going to do is I'm not going to take a lot of the time talking about the test scores because I know Mr. Jonah Agins went over test scores with you already, but I do want to talk for a few minutes about them if that's okay. And so there are a lot of slides in here about the test scores, but I'm not going to talk about all of them. But the main one I think is on, on your handout is on page four. And it should look something like that. 2016-17 proficiency rates is probably cut off on yours, but I think I handpicked a year above it if it's on. So as you know, the state has come up with a new way of grading schools and a new way with the A through F grading system. And it all starts with 2016-17 test results. So last year's, the test that we took last year was actually used to see how much growth was from the previous year of 2016-17 rates. And you can see where Hammond stood in 2016-17. And then in 1718, you can see that we had slight increases in both math and ELA. We grew by 4.08 percent and 3.03 percent in math and ELA respectively on the test that we took last year. Now, I am going to ask you to flip back to a slide. I don't have an PowerPoint presentation which looks like this. It's got the schools in Lincoln County along the checkmarks. Now, if you look at Hammond PKA, you'll notice that Hammond PKA has two checkmarks. And if you look at the top to see what checkmarks mean, it means that you've met your annual goal. Well, according to the state, and like I said, I know Mr. Agins has already talked to you about this, but they, from that 2016-17 year, they take the difference between your score in math and ELA and 100 percent. And they subtract your score from the 100. Then they take half of that and they add it to your score and that becomes your long-term target for the year 2930. So by 2930, I think I have it on that slide somewhere. Yeah, long-term goal. If you look where it says long-term goal on this slide, in math, Hammond PKA has to be at 61.91 to meet our long-term goal. And in ELA, we have to have a proficiency rate of 68.57 to meet our long-term goal. Now, with that in mind, we have to grow annually by, let's see. Math, we have to grow 3.17. It's at the bottom, annual targets. We have to grow by 3.17 each year. And in ELA, we have to grow 2.61 percent each year in order to be at those percentages in 2930. And if you look, in math, we grew 4.08, which is above 3.17. And in ELA, we grew at 3.03, which is above the 2.61. And that's where those two checkmarks come from. We met those two targets this year. So in order to keep getting those checkmarks, we're going to have to at least grow every year by those percentages in math and ELA. So that is a positive for us with the test scores that we did show growth in both of those. And also, on the slide that has the subgroups, which we don't have a lot of subgroups, and two of, the three subgroups, which, you know, one is why that encompasses most of our school because we don't have a lot of diversity, but children with disabilities, this is a tough one to grow in, it really is, especially if you have a large population. And we met the growth with children with disabilities as well. So those are the positive things that we can take from our test scores that even though we're not happy with the proficiency rates, we are growing at a level to meet the state, what the state has set as our target for the 2930 school year, which is 12-year number, I believe. And that's pretty much all I want to talk about the test scores other than the science scores recently came in. I don't know if anybody's talked to you about the science scores.
I haven't seen them.
But they have come in, they're available. I just wanted to show you how we did on the science because I figured, they weren't out when this dragon talked to you, so he probably didn't mention them. But if you'll look, West Virginia and eighth, the top one is eighth grade science. The average percent proficient in West Virginia for eighth grade science was 38. And you can see that ours is at, what is that, 46? I have trouble seeing that bottom number there. 45? We're at 45, so we're 7 percent above the, above the state. And then if you look at the fifth grade, the state average is 38 proficient and we were 36. So we were very close to the state average in science. So again, that's something to celebrate, even though, you know, when you have less than half your kids proficient, but you can see that we are running at or near or above the state in science in both fifth and eighth grade at this point.
I was just to point out that Mr. Agins has come up with some of that information test score data, but Mr. Midkiff has requested that we're going to have a board meeting just more just pertaining to testing, which we're going to look at a lot of these things more than that, but we appreciate what he gives us.
Okay. But yeah, because that information, every, pretty much everything that I'm showing you on those slides, that's on the department education side. I pulled it right from there. But they don't really tell you how you get your score, so we kind of, we sat down and we figured it out on our own. And you know, we, we saw those two checkmarks and that was something good. We wanted, we wanted to know why we got it. So we figured that out.
We appreciate that.
I do. All right, so that's the test score, so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Up and she's going to talk to you a little bit about how we're going to attack student achievement.
Hello, Mrs. Huffman. Our plans to improve student achievement, some of these things we've had in, you know, place for quite a while. And they have helped improve like our English Language Arts test scores and we're going to continue with those. The first thing, of course, is the IRE program, which is the computer-based program that once the kids take a screener, it puts them at the level where they need to be and then they work towards, you know, finishing that out by the end of second grade. Then we have our multi-tiered system of support, which includes our Title I teachers in that, which is number three. Two Title I teachers working with grades K through 3. Mr. Davis and I revamped that and this year their schedules include K through 3. They help our teachers, they actually go in and co-teach in the morning, the English Language Arts, and then afternoon they do math. So they're addressing both, you know, ELA and math with those two Title I teachers. Imagine Learning, that is the math program that AEP purchased. We're still in the process of learning about that and getting that implemented to the full extent. Reflex Math, this was a grant that Stephanie Workman wrote for sixth grade. She's in the process of getting all that, you know, implemented with our students as well. Implement the AR resources, now that's the resources provided by the West Virginia Department of Ed as far as the test data and things that we can do to improve our test scores by practicing with benchmarks and formative assessments. Attendance incentive, we've worked with the PTO, we've come up with an attendance incentive. At the end of each nine weeks, students will actually have a reward for attending. They can only miss two days or less to be in that. And at the end of the year, we'll have a huge celebration for those kids with perfect and faithful attendance. Test talks, Mr. Davis, Mrs. Davidson and myself, we talk to every student, grades 3 through to 8, talk to them about setting goals for their tests, and we will bring them back in and go over their test results soon and let them know that they, you know, accomplished those goals, what should they do to reach them this coming year if they didn't. Leadership data notebooks, every grade level, pre-K all the way through to 8, have those data notebooks. Ties in with Leader and Me, they set goals for themselves. Teachers go and talk with those students, are they actually accomplishing those goals? Once they do that, then they reset them and it could be like for attendance, it could be behavior, it's just what the classroom teachers feel that's important. And then the students set personal goals as well. Responsible Students, which is CATS for Success, that's, we give those students rewards for behavior, attendance, academics and all that. It ties back in with that Responsible Student Program. And we implemented that last year and it was really positive for our students. Envision Math Series, the resources, this is our new math series that we adopted that replaced everyday math. The training that we had this summer was really positive and it has a computer-based program called Newton that does the same thing as IRE does for reading. They, they take a screener and then it places them at their level and then they work towards improving, you know, from where they started with the baseline data. Student Mentoring, we have older kids that come over, work with our younger kids reading math. Then we have student wellness activities that we implement, that go noodle. Then we have like exercising, just different things that teachers throw in there to get that extra 30 minutes in of wellness. Clubs, that happens over the middle school side and houses. And then math intervention classes, we've implemented that over in the middle school two days per week. We do math skills, then we do CTE and then they do like leader and me activities. But that is something that we know that we've really got to work towards is improving our math skills. So two days a week, we focus in on, you know, the standards and things that those kids need to meet.
And just one other thing, I want to thank Mr. King for helping to support us on a few of these things, especially with the attendance incentive. He's come up with some money for each school to, to be able to purchase incentives such as gift cards to reward those students that are coming to school faithfully. And as you know, I mean, you've seen the news, you've probably looked at the data, attendance statewide, pretty much at every level is not, is not very good. And with the new standard not being of 90 percent overall, the new standard being 90 percent attending 90 percent of the time, that puts on, you know, you're not, you're not in, just because your data says not, your students are attending 94 percent of the time, that still might mean you're only at 60 percent or 70 percent of your kids who are coming 90 percent of the time. So, you know, Mr. King has supported us in that and also with the Leader and Me program that he's helped to bring to Lincoln County, you know, we really appreciate him helping to come up with the funding to do that as well. Mrs. Oss.
So for the challenges and barriers based on the data, if you look at the, some of the slides of the data in the packet, you'll see the low-income brackets and a lot of red in there. So one of the, one of the challenges facing teachers, of course, this year is adapting to the new math series. We have a lot of new things going on. We have a new benchmark process, we have new things in the AR system, plus we have a new math series. So one of the things with our math scores that's going to be a challenge for us this year is adapting to the new math series, but so far it seems like everybody really loves it. Parents have had good comments, students have had good comments, the teachers have as well.
What's the cycle for the math now or all of it?
I think it's seven years, isn't it?
It's six or seven, just to be tied up.
Six, I suppose, seven, six years. So the second is a little bit bigger issue, students not being, being held accountable for the West Virginia General Summit Assessment. It's something that affects every one of us. We just had our benchmark or our pre-test, I suppose you would call it, and you always have those students who finish in five minutes. And there's no, I mean, you can offer incentives, but they have to be interested in those incentives. And I think that's something that's affecting everyone across the state and as students' age increases, the problem becomes greater. There really, we have to find a way to make students understand the importance of our General Summit Assessment. And this is the biggie. Transient foster and trauma-affected homes are increasing and that's, that's an unbelievable understatement. But one of the things that we are dealing with at least every day, every single teacher, every single counselor, everybody is dealing with students who are leaving a traumatic situation and coming straight to school. Students who have been put into foster care the night before and they still have to go to school the next day. So there's no, council, school counselors cannot do it. We really need some training in trauma-affected students across the county. We need some resources for dealing with these students who are in the middle of a horrible criminal situation and everybody involved in the situation gets services except them at school. So that's something that we really need to address. And if you'll click, I have the next one as well. So what are we going to do about it? These are some of our innovative programs that we're using. Project Wisdom is something that touches every child every day. And then the next bullet is morning leadership meeting. Every morning, every student in our school meets together to do the pledge, to have meetings, to give announcements. And so at the same time, we get a project wisdom lesson from Mr. Davis and it uses some famous words from famous people to try to impart a little bit of wisdom to our students. That also brings up the Leader and Me program. We're at a place in our Leader and Me program now where teachers are implementing it in the classroom and not just in an isolated way. So I think right now we're in a position where we're starting to see the effects of the Leader and Me program. In conjunction with that, we have Leaders of the Month. That's been a huge deal at our school. Students really want to be Leader of the Month. Parents really want their kids to be Leader of the Month. And they get a reward if they're Leader of the Month and they get to go out for lunch for that month, right? They can take their lunch for the month. And we have our CATS for Success program. That is our Responsible Student Program. That's in, what, the third year?
Second.
Second year of implementation. That's something that students strive for. Our literacy ladies, we love them. We have an amazingly tight group of parents who come in and they're the literacy ladies and you'll see them tucked in the corners on couches around the school everywhere reading with kids. And it's just an amazing program. Of course, Mrs. Huffman touched on Imagine Learning and Reflex Math as some grant-based things that we have going on right now to try to bump up those scores for our traumatized and students in difficult positions.
Student safety, this was me. Okay, I'll come back over here. Before we go, just a question to you. You got two Title I teachers?
Title I, yes.
And are they, they don't work, this K3, they don't work with any of the other, do you want to cover that level?
No, that's, that's all the time that we had.
Well, I understand. I understand. Do you have any other outside interventions or anybody else outside of your regular classroom teachers?
We had one, we had a 20-hour post-it. Nobody applied for it last year. It went all the way into, I think it was into January before somebody finally applied and took it last year. So after nobody applied for it the first time, I asked Mr. King rather than to sit on that and wait that we use that money for some type of staff development rather than hiring interventions.
Okay. I'm just, so outside of your regular classroom teachers, you just had the two Title I teachers?
Right, right.
Okay.
Mr. Priest, if I might add, Mr. Priestley, if, if Don has a need, we do have that in an isolated budget area and if he finds the need that they need an interventionist and they want to post that, we can almost do that as well. But right now, we've, we've kind of got that pigeonholed for professional development.
I understand, and I also understand we're acting out of the heart of having it focused on K3, you know, when they're first started, but I also know that there are some that are for a pain that might be up there.
We've done, as a principal, you know, I've been a principal this is my seventh year, we've done it both ways. We use them with the upper grades, we use them on the lower grades. And so I couldn't tell you which one's better.
Well, I'm not saying that that's not a good idea, not the best way to use them. I'm just thinking maybe other methods and means to work with the other ones too. But that's up to us, I guess.
Well, we have put in some, a couple intervention classes. Our sixth grade, which was our fifth grade last year scored the lowest, so we have a intervention, they have, we have an intervention class in this workroom is pulling kids out of, and it's on a rotational basis, out of art and music to provide extra math intervention. So they're not missing all of art and music, but you know, she'll, she'll take a group for them for a week or so, then, then she'll take another group. Really, she needs to work with all of them because we only have about, that grade one and five levels proficient, so.
Well, that's what I was getting, just the fact that those kids in all those grade levels, many of whom are, you know, need additional assistance and knowing that, you know, I'm trying to teach you just the standard group and when I have a whole bunch of little subgroups in there or something, but how do you address that? That's the age-old question that I'm having. Just trying to see how you all addressed it. Have you had any thoughts about how can we do, you know, something we might do to improve that? Okay, good.
All right, so our student safety goes, we have in place what most schools have in place. We have, you know, the spot cards to get in, the visiting system for any visitors who come in, obviously. We've got signs up everywhere. So I've put signs up, all visitors report to the main office. They're everywhere. We've done a lockdown procedure and I've asked Officer Lawrence and he said he was going to check with you to make, Mr. Snyder, make sure, see if he could get away on the 12th. I've asked him to come and do the active, because we have a lot of young teachers on our staff now to do the active shooter training on the 12th when we have that professional learning day. I'm hoping that he can, can you put that in his ear?
I'll invite you to come here with the FBI training. If you might do that from nine to noon that second day. We'd like to stay.
Is that, is that the act? Okay, I like that idea. So, so we're planning on doing that. Of course, we have crisis intervention team. We do have an evacuation drill plan since, you know, something happened, say a semi rolls over in a curb down there carrying gasoline, that we could, we have places that we have marked to go to if we have to get out of the building in both directions, just in case we have to, because you may be shut down from going one way and have to go to the other. You know, we do our 10 fire drills per year. We did Coke Red earlier this year. And from what I understand, I talked with Jonah, probably before he left, probably around January, maybe February, we're going to have a fund in every classroom, which we own, we have very few places in the building. I would say maybe 10 tops funds between both buildings. It's going to be nice to have a fund in every classroom where those teachers can call the office if they need us or if we need to call them, we can do so as well. So it'll be very nice when that, when that is installed. Of course, I've got the active shooter training. We'll try to change it to FBI. Facility needs.
We would like to see a fence installed in close to the middle school building with the cafeteria because out back there is an opening and we do keep the doors locked but still, you know, people can get in there if the door's unlocked and actually have access to the middle school building. We need a walkway covering from the gym to the elementary building. That's when our students leave, the morning meeting and go over to the elementary after the meeting, school morning. So it needs to be covered because they get wet and it's really cold sometimes, want to go from the gym back over. Update some middle school bathrooms. I think those bathrooms probably are very dated, probably with some of the...
I'd say Mr. Limble, he would probably put in, he was a freshman in high school.
I like that.
I like you all the way. No, we painted over, but the paint can only go so far.
And then we'd like to have painting done between the two main buildings out back because it's, I mean, it hadn't been painted in years. It's really nasty looking. We did some painting this summer, but we just can't reach up, you know, high enough to get all of it. And then the facial boards need painted at the gym entrance. The gym actually needs painted. We need a couple of storage buildings to replace the ones that we have because the bombs are starting to...
bobs are starting to rot. And we need concrete pad between the cafeteria and the gym because they can, you know, leaving the gym from the morning meeting, wanting the cafeteria for breakfast. If it's raining, it's muddy, so we could get some concrete poured in there would be nice. Holes in the parking along the front of the gym need patched because water sands there in the mornings. It's kids exit the bus and go in. Parents make comments about it and even in the winter time, it's kind of slick.
Yeah, fringes over.
Yeah. LED lighting in hallways. We do have some over on the elementary side, which made a huge difference. So we'd like to have some, especially over in the basement, the middle school. Double fence installed for entrance into the playground. And then we need mulch for the playground. And you'll see in just a minute why we need that mulch. And these are some of the things that we've done this summer to make the building more attractive for, you know, our students and our staff. This is our banner for Leader in Me. One of our former teachers, he drew the Leader in Me tree for us before leaving us. Did a great job. We had lots of positive comments about that. Now, here's why we need the mulch. A piece of equipment that was purchased by the PTO, we did a lot of fundraising for that. The students can't have access to that until the mulch is put, you know, as a protective covering on the ground there. So we're still waiting for the mulch. On the right, you see some picnic tables and the trash cans that Mr. Davis had installed to update the playground for the students. And then on the left, the playground, there you see the two logs. That's part of our natural playground. We still need mulch. You go around those before they can even play in those. And then you've got the preschool playground on the right.
And as you know, we brought the preschool over to the elementary building this year. And no longer house at the central office.
And then this summer, we worked really hard. We painted the cafeteria. We actually painted, painted everything that was possible except for the gym. And it was just too large to finish in one summer. But we worked with Lincoln Primary Care. They provided money and we bought some decals to put up to decorate schools. And this is just the cafeteria part, you know, motivational things, big degree. And then on the right, stay on track. And we tried to make it nice for elementary and middle school students. These are some of the things that we put on the walls. Ms. Dudley, she's really good. She and Ms. Comance painted the multiplication chart upstairs. And then on the right, she put that saying on the wall just for motivational purposes for our students. We have reading areas. This is where our literacy ladies, they'll take our students, they'll sit with them and help practice, you know, their homework for the evening. Because we try to select students that don't have that homework base, you know, when they go home, no one at home reads with them. So we try to choose those students and they pull them for like 15 minutes a day and read with them. We have Dr. Seuss quotes because that was something that went with Leader in Me, like a theme. So we chose Dr. Seuss quotes every door, every teacher's classroom. In the cafeteria, we have quotes that are motivational for the kids. We have room numbers on finally, teachers' names on every classroom door. So everybody's identified now. Every bathroom, we painted. We put decals in. This is the little boys' bathroom downstairs. And they really enjoy, you know, having new things up in their bathroom and clean bathrooms too. On the right, that's our community leaders, our community partners that help provide things for our students. So we wanted to recognize them as well.
We put this banner, this is in the main hallway, it's also in the gym, a couple places that we can recognize the business part.
And the conference room, we bought the tables and the chairs so that we could bring all the staff together in a nice room, nice facility there. And Mr. Davis had the DVD installed and makes for a better climate than just in the cafeteria to have our meetings. And here's a picture of pre-K cafeteria, which we think is really positive of them being at our school. We've enjoyed them being there. And I think they enjoy being over with the other kids.
That's it? Good.
Anybody have any particular questions, comments, anyone?
Apparently you all looked pretty closely at the data. I think I know the answer to this, but I'll ask you anyway. You may have looked at it for anybody else. When you were comparing the 2016-7 to the 2017-18, is that right, Dan?
Mm-hmm.
I, I know that the test changed. Is there a way to actually use that as an apples-to-apples comparison? Or are you just doing the best you can with different test results from different tests and looking at percentage growth?
Beats.
Okay. Thought so. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that you'd like to recognize that's on the LSIC account?
Uh, no, that's it. Everyone that we brought. We would like to thank Sean, not only as, you know, being the, the law's news, but also as a parent, being very supportive of our school.
See him around every night?
Just the word. We see him from time to time.
We were getting calls about that.
Funny, I think everybody put a helmet hat out back for him.
Saved a lot of time with him. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Sorry. Next is going to be the Lincoln County High School, Mr. Snyder. I neglect to, but thank everyone who was responsible for our dinner this evening and for the cake that some of us took up and all those things. We sure appreciate that. Everyone who was responsible, thank you from all of us.
First of all, again, thank you guys for, for always supporting us. I, you know, it's kind of winding down my career. You do a lot of soul searching, I guess, when you get kind of toward the end. And I just want to really let you guys know how much it's appreciated. I think most of you guys have been around for a pretty while. We're going to bribe a little about some of the things that we've done here. But I want to thank you guys for always supporting Lincoln County High School. That's truly appreciated. As always, I'm going to do the presentation. This is, I just get to run this preschool. I don't get to meet the people that's actually in it. Our students want to kind of talk to you about what's happening at Lincoln County High School. But I'm also going to turn it over to our new LSIC chairperson, Mr. Whiteport.
I don't know why I say it's new. It's like you're never listening off this committee, but I've been here every year for the seventh year.
We assumed you were running.
I know.
Mike, if there's anybody else here that's on the LSIC committee.
Well, there it is. We've got Debbie, I think, in the back.
We don't want anybody left out here.
Seth Neal, this is where the meat came from. This is the meat man. And Matt Miller. And today we've got, this is Jessica Frye joining us to talk a little bit about trauma data and a few other things. But right now, we've got our president, Cara Alberts, Chloe Yocerson, and Catherine Blankenship, ladies.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Four jurors.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us and letting us talk a little bit about Lincoln County High School as students who actually go to Lincoln County High School. Okay, so we're going to talk some about our achievements and some of the things and how the numbers. So this is our state data. And so you can see like when we compare it to Lincoln County High School's data, it's pretty close. We pretty much meet all the state averages. In fact, in the fourth year graduation rate, we are about 3% above. The stars here show what we are well above in. So most of our students, almost all, are on track to graduation.
The way that we help students get on track to graduation is we have AMP classes, AMP math classes offered to ninth and 11th grade students. And we also have math tutoring once a week during AA.
Recently, they've introduced the SAT for state testing for juniors. I got to experience that last year and it helped me a lot. Just in case I wanted to take it again, it kind of gave me a little bit of a, just a little bit of insight next time I want to take it. We are continuing to have after-school tutoring programs as well as the reintroduction of club and intramural days.
Okay, and here's some of the programs we have at Lincoln County High School. So one big thing that we do is we have a large social media and community outreach. So our Twitter account here, we have over 1,500 followers. Our Instagram account has almost 800. And our Facebook account has over 2,800 followers. And so we can engage with the community here. So as you can see, our response time, we have a large team built of students, teachers and staff. Our response time is 91%. So we respond in about an hour. So if parents or students can send us messages about things happening at the school or like events going on, we're able to answer them directly online so that they don't have to call the school every time they have a question.
And so Peer Forward, I'm fortunate enough to be the captain of the Peer Forward team this year. We are the only school in West Virginia to have a Peer Forward chapter. This year, four students, the seniors, well, we have six seniors as well as four juniors. We have 10 members in total. Four of us got to travel to Florida International University in Miami this year. And we got to learn about how to get people, like students, prepared for not just college, but post-secondary schooling, as well as we took a writing class to fill out personal statements, learned how to fill out a FASBA, and just to get everyone prepared for what they need.
So we also have a wide variety of CTE classes and simulated workplace. Our FX Robotics team has went to Worlds and has placed countless, countless times. We have Skills USA. The state vice president is from Lincoln County High School, Bentley Baker.
And my daughter.
And we are getting a new Baker Space and introducing a CNC plasma cutter. Mike, can I say anything about the MIT grant?
Technically, no, you can't say anything about, Sean, cut your camera off for a second. It's serious. I will tell you about this, Steve, that we got to. Yeah, I really can't.